Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or recommendation to the city council. All testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address with the record. Print your name on the sign-in sheet provided outside the door, or we have your list of names on our queue. Each case will be introduced by staff in a list of documents that will be read into the record when the applicant will give the explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Melissa, could you please call the roll? Or Scott?
Viola Collin?
Here.
Myrna Aravala?
Here.
Mary McHolly?
Present.
Kirill Miranchev?
Here.
Jill Zorden?
Here.
Max Puchal?
Here.
Lisa Deacon?
Is there anyone here who plans to give testimony in any of the cases scheduled for tonight? I will now swear you in. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
I hear a few people. That's good. Will any members who were absent from the February 14th, the February 18th meeting 2020 certify for the record that they have read this transcript in any matters that will continue to tonight's hearing? I think the only one that was out was you, Jill.
I did read it. That's correct.
Perfect. All right. So the first order of business is to suspend the rules. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Could someone make a motion to suspend the rules so we can participate electronically or by telephone?
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals be granted a waiver of the regular rules and be allowed to execute this meeting digitally instead of in person. And that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. The next order of business, I need a motion for the approval of meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020.
I make a motion on the approval of the meeting minutes for February 18th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that has been passed. Any opposed? Okay, that's been passed. We're going to move from old business to the new business. Is the respondent for 1607 Chicago Avenue available?
Yes.
Is there someone here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I just can't see you, but that's okay. Melissa, could you read that case into the record?
1607 Chicago Avenue, Happy Lee Incorporated, Lussi, applies for a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant in the D4 Downtown Transition District, zoning code section 61153. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case.
Okay. So who's available to speak to this? Trin Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about your proposal, ma'am?
I don't know how to change the video, so hopefully that doesn't make a big of a
I see you.
See me now?
Yeah, so you actually did it. Right.
So for Happy Lee, it's going to be more of a takeout service for a multi-boba shop. So just minimal tabling, I would say three to four tables. The majority of it is going to be people ordering in or curbside and then just taking it out. It's mainly beverage, and then just the only other dish does waffles, which it's simple. It doesn't require like major equipments or anything.
Does anyone else have questions for her? I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. When had you planned to open? I know that we're in a terrible time. I just wonder.
I started submitting the building permit. Expected date, I would say probably towards the end of the summer. And also, as soon as constructions, all that is done. So I would say August, September.
Okay. Had you taken into account these new COVID rules, six feet apart and all of that?
I have. And actually, with this type of business, there's a few different boba shops around Chicago, Evanston, everything. And they still remain open because it's very easy to do the social distancing with the stickers and everything. And being the majority of it would be like curbside or takeout, I would still require people to wear masks, to come in, get their drinks, and leave. It was never intended to be like a hangout spa or like a dine-in or sit-down restaurant. So it would have been an issue.
It was always carryout?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions for her?
Yes, I have a question. I see that you have plans to implement the regulations for the city of Evanston with regard to sustainability? And recycling?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we do.
And you say that you have shared refuse containers in the rear of the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, so garbage collection is an issue that's taken care of. And then the other issue that often comes up with type 2 restaurants is parking for your employees.
So for the employees, there's a lot of public transportation on that area. It's closer to the, I mean, if people do use train. But the majority of the staff that I intend to hire will be part-time students from Northwestern, from the college nearby. So a lot of them won't be driving anyways. I assume a lot of them would live either in dorms or apartments nearby. And I would say 80% to 90% of customers in the area for dining rely on foot traffic anyways. So I don't think that it will affect parking issues at all.
Okay. And do you have a parking space yourself?
I do not have
Is there any? There's no parking on the premises?
Yeah, there's no parking there.
Okay.
It's the Marion Hotel, so.
Right, right.
So Ms. Lee, let me ask you. How many employees do you plan on having at your store?
Including myself, I intend to hire two to three more part-timers.
Everybody's part-time but you?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board for this respondent?
I have a question.
Okay.
You had mentioned, answered Chair Collins' first question, I think, curbside. Is that something just in response to the current COVID situation? Or is that something that you would envisage continuing? And how would you see that working? Because I think that's kind of a difficult, you know, street frontage there with the bike path and the turn-in for the Marion.
Okay. Curbside was something that I had more modified because of this COVID situation. I know that a lot of the parkings in the front are not long-term parking because it's like paid. So then that's why every time, if it's me, or so I always have like two or three employees because one person would be responsible to bring it out to the customers curbside. And that's only if those customers are driving. But like I mentioned before, I think most of my customers are all foot traffic. So should I?
Well, I feel like you will have significant foot traffic right there. It is right by Northwestern. However, do you have permission to use that circular driveway in front of the Marion? That's like at the edge of your property?
I do not. I can reach out to the property owner to double-check with them, but that isn't something that I've received confirmation yet. Because I know that the property owner for my shop also owns that area. So I can revisit that topic with him.
Any other questions for this respondent? Anybody?
No.
Melissa, what do we do if we have a person that was noticed that wants to talk? Do we have one for this? Somebody find in? No?
I believe Scott's going to let us know anytime that happens.
Oh, okay. So otherwise, it's just not happening?
Just ask the question just so we make sure we don't miss anyone.
Yeah, so if anyone is on the call and would like to, remember, the public would like to speak, you can use the feature of raising your hand. And then the chair can acknowledge you for public comment at that time.
I'm looking on here. I see somebody on the phone, but I don't see anyone raising their hand. There is Mary raising.
Yeah, I just, this was kind of an aside. For Scott and Melissa, is it necessary for us to make a motion on the 1327 Chicago Avenue, 528 Greenwood case?
We're going to completely renotice it, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I had asked that in the beginning. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said it. Any other questions before we close the record and do our personal deliberation? Max, anybody? Myrna?
No questions.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. We're going to close the record then. What's everybody's opinion of this proposal?
I'm actually good with it. I think it's a good business for the area.
Same with me. I think I support it. It's a good business.
I agree.
I feel like it'll be a great business there as well without a lot of replication. I agree.
I support it. It's in keeping with the comprehensive plan, and it meets all of the standards for special use. I am concerned just for the owner herself as I think it's even in question whether or not Northwestern students will be coming back to campus in the fall. But that's something that you'll deal with on your own.
It's okay. Distance learning, they need beverages when they go back to their dorm and apartments, right?
Yeah. I think that there's probably enough traffic in downtown Evanston to support it, notwithstanding the students, although they would certainly be a help.
Okay. Okay, so if that's the end of our comments, I am going to read the standards for special use. Are we ready for that? Okay. For the ZBA to recommend that city council grant a special use permit, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. That standard has been met. Type 2 restaurants are allowed under the special use sections for the D4 Downtown Transitional District. B complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. That standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive general plan. The proposed use promotes the growth and redevelopment of a business and commercial area and strengthens Evanston's economic base. C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. That standard has also been met. Staff has not received any comments opposing the project. The proposed use is complementary to nearby commercial and residential uses. D does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. That standard has also been met. The proposed use would occupy currently vacant retail space, adding to the value of the property in the neighborhood as well as draw additional foot traffic to the neighboring businesses along Davis Street and Chicago Avenue. E is adequately served by public facilities and services. That standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalks, a protected bike lane, streets, trash collection, and is in close proximity to parking garages as well both the CTA and the metro train stations and the CTA and pace bus stops. F does not cause undue traffic congestion. That standard has been met. The business's location is near CTA metro and pace transit stations and shops, and is adjacent to a protected bike lane and is proximate to several parking garages, making it reasonable to expect minimal impact to traffic in the area. G preserves significant historical and architectural resources. That standard has been met. No exterior modifications are anticipated to the already significantly altered storefront level of an architecturally and historically significant building like the Marion. H preserves significant natural and environmental resources. That standard is not applicable. I complies with all other applicable regulations. That standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can somebody please call the motion for this? Anyone? 1607 Chicago?
I will be happy to. I move that in the case of 1607 Chicago Avenue, that we recommend city council approve the special use with the conditions that the sustainability practices are followed and that the project is, I think we also do times usually, and I think that she has requested 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. Is that correct?
I would recommend that we adjust that to be 6:00 a.m. to midnight seven days a week just so that there's some room
So it's consistent? Okay. So from 6:00 a.m. to midnight and that the project otherwise be completed in compliance with the documents presented here.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Lee. Your proposal moves on to city council. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. The next case is 2678 Green Bay Road. Is the respondent for that here Dylan Johnson, Lisi?
Yes, I am.
Total Sauna Fitness?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Melissa, could you read that case into the record?
2678 Green Bay Road, Dylan Johnson, Lussi, applies for a special use permit for indoor commercial recreation, total sauna fitness in the C2 Commercial District and Central Street Corridor Overlay District, zoning code section 615145. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. You were muted there.
That's okay. Could you explain your proposal, please?
Yes, of course. So we are looking to get a special use permit in order to allow group fitness classes. And that would be basically small group fitness classes where we would have kind of cardio strength classes, yoga classes, high-intensity interval training. So those classes will be, you know, small groups. And then we'll also supplement that with personal training. Obviously, that's already approved and wasn't a requirement for the special use. So as it stands for this, we're seeking permission to do group fitness classes at this space.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, let me ask you if you have made the preparations. That's a very small place. I went to it and looked at it. Have you made the preparations for the new restrictions under the COVID?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We're lucky in a current position where the landlord and us, we have not come to an agreement on the terms of the lease yet. They were really flexible because we were obviously supposed to have this meeting in, what, in March? So they said, hey, let's, you know, regroup after, you know, you get in touch with the city. So all that to say, we have a pretty good timeline in terms of our ability to stretch this out as long as we need to. So ideally, we'll be able to kind of open after everything settles down. However, our plan is to kind of reconstruct our class format where we will be offering. There won't be any shared space. Basically, if you're there for a class, you'll have your own Plexiglas pod where you'll just be essentially in your own little cubicle for that space. And, you know, our goal is to have an average class size of about six participants. So yeah, small space, but we're, you know, going to have small classes for it.
Any other questions for this respondent board?
Is there adequate parking in the lot there for your class sizes?
Yeah, so we have six dedicated parking spots. And the appeal to this space for us is how walkable-friendly the neighborhood is there off of Central Street and Hartree and whatnot. So certainly, we do hope to appeal to a walking demographic. And all of our classes will be separated by at least a half an hour buffer. So yeah, if we're at capacity with those classes, we should be okay. And that's also, anytime the pet people is not open, and they open at 9:00 a.m., we get access to their spaces as well. And obviously, a lot of workout classes, the bulk of ours will be in the morning, you know, 7:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m. So we feel comfortable about the parking situation.
Great.
And there's no delivery and not a lot of garbage or anything like that?
Correct. We're not going to have any sort of deliveries. We'll eventually do some retail, some shirts and things like that, but not on a large-scale basis.
Okay, so if nobody else is going to ask about the employees, how many employees do you plan on having?
So currently, it's myself and my wife. We're our full-time employees. And then currently, we have three trainers that work for us on a part-time basis. And those trainers would be coming and going for specific classes. And since we would only have one class in the space at a time, there really wouldn't be a situation in which we'd have, you know, more than four employees there at any given time.
And so for four employees, parking is simple. Do they live close by, all of your employees?
My wife and myself, we live about 100 yards from it and looking at it now. So yeah, we walk there. One of our employees is in the city. And fortunately, we're situated right next to the central metro stop, so that will be her means of transportation. And then another is a local till to Willmett. So probably a driver there. But yeah, the majority of us, or at least two, three of the five, will not be coming in cars.
Any other questions for this respondent before we close the record?
I have a question. I have a question. Are there any noise concerns given the types of classes being offered?
You know, so kind of our whole ethos, our vision, you know, sauna is Gaelic for happiness and prosperity. So we're a very lighthearted brand where we're not going to be doing any sort of, you know, rugged ball slams or anything like that, no ropes. So we are appealing more to a kind of softer-edge class where it's not going to be intense in your face. All that to say, you know, we're not going to have microphones on our instructors, so it will be, you know, a casual, calm experience for all of our classes. So I don't envision any sort of issues with music or anything like that.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no more questions for the respondent, I'm going to close the record and then we can have our personal deliberation board. What do you think of this proposal?
I think that it's an excellent proposal. It's definitely in an area that will draw people to that particular type of fitness class. And it is, there's high density around that area. It's very well-served by public transportation. And I think it fits in well with what's in the neighborhood. There's a kind of a cluster of fitness centers in core downtown, but not quite so many in that area. So to me, it seems like a very good fit.
I agree with you, Mary. I think it's a great business and a good fit right there. The rest of the board?
Excuse me. I agree as well. I think it's a good use of that space and a good fit for the neighborhood. My concerns were articulated by, I think it was Mr. Puktel about the noise concerns, but if that's been addressed.
Yeah, and I agree with all of you guys. It's a good proposal. It's a good business. I'm in support.
Same here, in support.
I'm in support. It meets the comprehensive plan and all the standards for special use.
Okay, with everybody's support, I am going to close the record and move on to the special use standards. For the ZBA to recommend that city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use 1 is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. That standard has been met. Commercial indoor recreation is a listed permitted use in the C2 Commercial District and is listed as an additional special use under the additional special use for sub-raya number seven of the OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District. B complies with the purposes and the policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. That standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive general plan. The project promotes growth and adaptive use of a currently vacant commercial space. C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with the existing special uses or as a category of land use. That standard has been met. The proposed commercial indoor recreation facility is complementary to a nearby commercial uses and peak hours are not anticipated to overlap or directly compete with nearby special uses. D does not interfere with or diminish the value of property to the neighborhood. That standard has been met. The proposed business will occupy an otherwise vacant portion of an existing commercial space. I'm sorry? Anyway? Okay. Of an existing commercial space. E is adequately served by public facilities and services. That standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalk streets in relative proximity to public transportation. F does not cause undue traffic congestion. That standard has been met. The proposed use will not generate parking and traffic issues due to non-overlapping peak hours of operation, proximity to public transportation, anticipated catchment area, and a small class size. G preserves significant historical and architectural resources. That standard is not applicable. H preserves significant natural and environmental resources. That standard is not applicable. I complies with all other applicable regulations. That standard has been met.[1775.04] The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. And towards that, will somebody please call the motion for this? Anybody?
I'll do a motion. Thank you. Did someone else say that they wanted to do this motion? Okay, I will. In the case of 2678 Green Bay Road, case 20ZMJV0007, I move that we recommend to City Council that they approve the special use, provided that the plans are completed in accordance with the documents presented in today's meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson. Your application has been approved here. And you can move on to City Council. Melissa will tell you when.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Stay safe.
Thank you for coming.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. The next address is 1717 Simpson Street. Is the respondent for 1717 Simpson Street here on the phone?
Yes. Yes, this is Estera Kuku.
Okay, Estera Kuku. Melissa, could you read this into the record, please?
1717 Simpson Street. Stephane Kuku applicant applies for a special use permit for a detached, single-family dwelling in the B1 Business District, zoning code section 6923. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
Thank you. Ms. Kuku, could you tell us about your proposal, please?
Sure. So the purpose of the special use is a single-family residential. So what we're requesting approval is to match the existing enclosed porch with the existing roof slope with the porch. So there will be new framing and enclosure will be the same size, in the same location as the existing enclosed porch. And this will not interfere with or diminish the value of the property. So that's all we're requesting, is just to match the existing roof slopes.
Melissa, is that the special use?
Yes. To clarify for everyone, this is an existing, single-family home that has been legally non-conforming since it's located in a business district. So by expanding the square footage of the home, that increases the non-conformity. So this special use would bring the property into compliance and then essentially just let the owners rebuild that enclosed front porch that they previously had.
So Melissa, this will be maintained then as a legal, non-conforming residence in a commercial district?
It's currently legally non-conforming. This would make it legal.
Oh, legal because we're giving them a special use and the special use would be a residential use in a commercial zone?
Correct.
Okay.
And will that maintain itself even after the sale of this property if the Kukus move out? They sell the property, will it maintain as residential legally non-conforming?
Yes, that use would continue with the property.
Continues with the property, okay.
So that I was not understanding. So it will not revert to commercial with a sale of the property? So by granting a special use, this becomes a residential property, almost like a spot zone?
Sort of. It basically continues with the structure. So if someone wanted to change the structure in any way, then that's the time that it would revert back to commercial.
Okay, all right, got it. Thank you.
Any other board members have questions for this respondent? The architects? Anybody?
I actually did have a question. How long have you been in the home, Ms. Kuku?
We purchased the home November 25th of last year.
Okay. And so this is just making repairs and modifications to the existing structure?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Melissa, trying to further make sure I understand the special use that we're giving. So I think there's a mix of both residential and business properties in this district. And you're saying all of the residential ones that have not been granted a special use are non-conforming, except for those that have one, and we're considering just giving one now?
Correct. In an ideal world, all of those residential uses in that business district would have a special use. But this is how we kind of bring them into compliance as we go.
But what does that mean for the property owner, whether or not they have an approved special use or not?
I mean, really, it's just a difference on paper. If they don't have a special use, then it makes it difficult to obtain a mortgage or refinance or make improvements to the property. So it's...
Well, and they cannot, they can't sell the property as a residence, can they? If it doesn't have a special use?
Well, this one did.
It depends on the mortgage company. A lot of them won't. This makes it more legal.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, Melissa, can I ask you what prompted the Kuku family to come to the city to request a special use? Was it because they were doing construction on the front?
I believe that was actually a staff recommendation. They began construction on the front there and then realized that they needed a permit for it, came in for their permit, zoning let them know that they either need a variation to expand a legally non-conforming structure or a special use. But it seems more appropriate to go the special use route since that then brings the property into compliance so that it doesn't have to continue as a legally non-conforming use.
I have one other question in relationship to that. So the FAR for commercial use is quite different than the FAR for a residential use. So if we give them a special use as a residence in this commercial district, they will be constrained by the requirements of a residence as opposed to being able to like, you know, build a 4.00 FAR or something like that?
They would follow the maximum FAR that's listed for a residential use in that business district.
Okay.
Any other questions for this respondent from the board? Do we have anybody signed in that wants to speak to this, Melissa? Has any other resident neighbors or anybody contacted you to come speak tonight?
Not that I'm aware of.
And you don't see anybody signed in, right, Scott? Okay, I'm going to assume that that's okay. So closing the record, what do we think of this proposal before I move to the special use standards? I like that they're fixing this house. It always needed a little upgrade and it's a nice house. So I actually like that it's going to look a lot better right there on Simpson.
Yeah, I think extending the roof line back to the adjoining roof line will give it a better appeal without having to put in a lot of money into the property either.
I agree that improvement to any of the structures in the neighborhood is a plus. And, you know, being just across the alley from the Andy Spats church there, they, you know, they're not imposing on anyone. And but it's a lovely place to live. They're right across from Foster Field, so I'm really happy to see improvements.
I agree. This is an obvious improvement to the home, and they meet all the standards for special use.
Yeah, it's a good project, so let's support it. It has been a while for this property over there. It needs improvement. And the special use will let them do it. I'm not concerned about the future of the property because if there is a sale, it always can revert back to B1 and commercial mixed use over there. So it's good to have currently a good-looking residential building over there.
Miranda, did you speak? I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah, no, I did. I'm in support. We're good.
Okay, so closing the record, I will read the standards for special use again. For the ZBA to recommend that the City Council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use, A, is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. The standard has been met. Single-family dwellings are allowed under the special use section for the B1 Business District. B, complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. That standard has been met. The use is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive general plan. The proposed use involves, improves Evanston's housing stock, and the improvements to the structure have added value to the property. C, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. That standard has been met. Staff has not received any comments opposing the project. The proposed use is an existing and complementary to the nearby business uses. The proposed use, okay. D, does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. That standard has been met. The improvements increase the value of the property and the aesthetic of the business district. E, is adequately served by public facilities and services. That standard has been met. The dwelling is served by adequate sidewalk streets. Trash collection is in close proximity to the CTA bus stops. F, does not cause undue traffic congestion. That standard has been met. The dwelling is existing and has not caused undue traffic congestion to date. No increased traffic will occur. G, preserves significant historical and architectural resources, not applicable. H, preserves significant natural and environmental resources, not applicable, and complies with all other applicable regulations. That standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion in regards to 1717 Simpson Street, case 20ZMJV-0013, that we grant the special use permit based on the documents presented and the testimony presented today.
Miranda, we're recommending to City Council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Recommending to City Council. I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Max?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Jill?
No.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Okay. So Ms. Kuku, your proposal goes on to City Council, which is the determining body. Contact Melissa and she'll let you know what you need to do next.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay. So moving on to the final case, 1906 Main Street. Is Ms. Aguilar or anyone that's representing this proposal here?
Yes, this is Gabrielle Aguilar.
Hi, Ms. Aguilar. How are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you.
That's good. Melissa, can you read this case into the record?
1906 Main Street. Gabrielle J. Aguilar Lessie applies for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Four Sons Fresh Juice, in the C1 commercial district, zoning code section 61023. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
Thank you. Ms. Aguilar, would you like to tell us about your business?
I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you've already stated, my name is Gabrielle. I am a native resident of Evanston, born and raised. I have had a longtime desire to open my own brick-and-mortar business in Evanston. And I'm excited that this finally come, unfortunately during these times, but, you know, we make do. So being someone who is very health-conscious, I've always struggled to have more healthy food options available. And so I've decided to open one of my own juice bar, primarily juice bar and smoothie bar, with very minimal foods that we will roll out a couple of months down the line after we open. And that would incorporate some bowls, such as like frozen smoothie bowls, salad, rice bowls with various vegetables and bean options, and plant-based protein slash meat options. There will be no meat or dairy in the space. It's all what some call vegan. But I just want to focus on it being Whole Foods, plant-based, because some of the terms that, some define vegan as more strict. And there may be honey in some of my ingredients, but that would be the only non-vegan item. So it would, the plan before COVID-19, it was already to have it as a carryout type-two restaurant, very minimal seating, primarily just stools at the window and one floor-top table that is handicap accessible. So we were already pretty much ready for people to come in and get juice and smoothies and very few food options to go. We're really excited to find a space kitty-corner from the new Robert Crown facility and offering some healthier food options, although we don't know what the concession options will be inside of Robert Crown. In the area, most of the food options are fast food, highly-processed foods, not many, very many options for plant-based eaters that are healthy. And I just want to add to the options for people who are in the community. I live in the fifth ward. I was very passionate about wanting my business in the fifth or second ward. Over the past year, I did a few pop-up juicing Sundays at Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. I'm very passionate about offering healthy options to low-income residents of Evanston and sharing health and wellness to my neighbors and community members. So I'm really excited about having, you know, a small space for people to come in and grab some vitality and help with this time of really needing to boost our immunity systems and do some detoxing, some fasting, some cleansing, and incorporate that into their regular diets, not trying to really conform anybody, but help them to infuse more health and vitality in their own diets.
When did you plan to open, Ms. Aguilar?
So before COVID, I was hoping for the spring. I'm happy that we're not that far off track, hoping that sometime this summer still to open, although we'll have to adhere to the new rules and parameters of this virus. We're still happy to be opening the business.
Okay, that's great. How many employees do you plan on having here?
A small number. As you know, the business is called Four Sons, and that's primarily because I have four beautiful sons. Two of those boys are of working age, although they're students, so that's three of us to start. And then my plan is to hire five to seven additional employees, primarily students, to learn a trade and to pick up part-time hours. I will be the only full-time employee.
And they'll be local, everybody, pretty much, like right around there?
That's the plan.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
It sounds like a really great option. I couldn't be happier. I agree with you that most of the food options at that corner of Dodge and Main Street are, you know, hot dogs and 7-Eleven. And so it's a really wonderful thing to have a healthy juicing, plant-based food option opening for that area. And I think Robert Crown will be a wonderful feeder for the restaurant.
Awesome, thank you.
I agree with Mary.
Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar, do you have any sort of expectations for how customers will arrive at your store? Do you expect traffic spill over from Robert Crown, car traffic?
Great question. Um, I anticipate all sorts of traffic, um, especially foot and bike. We do have a parking lot. So for those who aren't familiar with this, um, storefront, this is a strip mall, uh, across the street from seven eleven, the same mall where the UPS store is. So there is a parking lot that accommodates roughly sixty cars to the south of the building entrance. Um, that's also where we will accept deliveries. Then there is a pedestrian walkway that comes from the front of UPS and comes around the corner on Main. Unfortunately, on Main, no one will be able to pull up. Um, so they will have to park in the lot and come across the street. Um, I can't speak for that Walgreens parking lot across the street, but hopefully down the line, we'll also be able to, you know, just run across the street to the Robert Crown field and and deliver to people who may place mobile orders to our juice bar.
Okay.
I would expect that you.
Go ahead.
I I would expect that you would get a number of people also coming on their bikes from James Park to, uh, you know, get a snack or a juice after baseball or whatever. So I I think that, you know, once you've established yourself, uh, access should be pretty, uh, available.
Sure, and I've also spoken to the, um, the landlord about, uh, putting a new bike, bike, um, what do you call them?
Bike rack?
Bike rack.
Right.
At my storefront or just adjacent to it and he's very open to that. So, so, so bikes have a place to secure their, um, their bike while they come in and and go.
Right.
Okay. So Scott, is there anyone signed in that wants to speak to this that might be from the neighborhood?
Uh, we haven't received their requests thus far. If there's anyone, um, on the call, let's raise their hand using the, the raise hand option, participants, we can call on you now. I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone. Okay. Then I'm gonna close the record and move on for personal deliberation. I actually like this business. I like that there'll be a business there, someplace that I can go, it's in my neighborhood. I appreciate it. Thanks for bringing a business to the fifth ward.
Thank you.
Board members?
Yeah, I would support this project. It, uh, it needs something like that over there. I agree with Muffin. Uh, there are plenty of, uh, let's say, fast-food things around, but there's nothing of this kind, and I appreciate that. So it's a good project, I'm in support.
Isn't that still the ninth ward? It's the second, actually, Alderman Peter Bray's ward.
It is Peter Bray's ward, okay.
I'm in favor as well.
Go ahead, Max.
Thank you. I'm in favor as well. Um, it's a great project and it's great to see that the business owner is passionate about what she's going to do, um, and I'm eager for it to start. Um, and it meets all the standards of the special use and I'm in favor.
And I'm in support of the project as well.
Thank you.
I agree. I think it sounds like an exciting and needed offering, not only for the area, but for the city. I think it's a, it's a unique, um, offering that a lot of people will be interested in trying and I I would just like to say I appreciate your, you know, care that you've put into the business model and your, um, connection that you've expressed to the community and your application. I really want to commend you for that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and with that, I will read the standards for special use. For the ZBA to recommend that the city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. The standard has been met. Type-two restaurants are allowed under the special use section for the C one commercial district. B complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. The standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive general plan. The proposed use promotes the growth and redevelopment of a business and commercial area and strengthens Evanston's economic base. C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. This standard has been met. Staff has not received any comments opposing the project. The proposed use is complementary to nearby commercial and residential uses as well as the new Robert Crown Center located across the street. D does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. That standard has been met. The proposed use would occupy a currently vacant retail space, adding to the value and vibrancy of the property in the neighborhood as well as the increased healthy food options. E is adequately served by public facilities and services. The standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalk streets, trash collection is in close proximity to CTA bus stops. F does not cause undue traffic congestion. This standard has been met. The business location is near CTA bus stops and has an existing large surface parking lot, making it reasonable to expect minimal impact to traffic in the area. G preserves significant historical and architectural resources. That standard is not applicable. H preserves significant natural and environmental resources. That standard is not applicable. I complies with all other applicable regulations. That standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Those are the standards. Can someone please call the motion? Anyone?
Um, I'll make the motion on, uh, nineteen oh six Main Street, uh, case two zero ZMG, ZMJV dash zero zero two three. Um, we make the recommendation to the city council, uh, for the special use permit, um, for Four Sons Fresh Juice, uh, uh, based on the documentation that is in the record as well as the testimony given tonight.
Do you want to recommend hours of operation?
Um, okay. Do we have hours?
I I would just give six AM to midnight.
Okay. Um, are there, are, Melissa, are there any restaurants at all in that area that are open till midnight, except for the seven eleven?
Um, there's a couple restaurants in.
Hooverless Plaza.
In Dempster and Dodge that are.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, we can, we can grant the, you know, recommend the hours and she will stay open the hours where there's business. I don't think that there's gonna be much business there at midnight, but.
Okay, is there a second for this motion that Merna made?
I have a second.
Okay, Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Aguilar. You move on to the city council, which is the determining body for this case. Please get in touch with Melissa and she'll let you know what's next.
Awesome, thank you so much, everyone.
Good luck.
So much. Okay, so the next is public comment. Have we not taken that for every case individually? Or is there a special something for public comment?
I don't think there's a special anything.
Then I would like to know who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
Um, if I can just say one thing real quick, um, I did send out an early quorum call, but we are doing a meeting on June second. We have two cases that are, they're mirror images of themselves, so it should be a pretty quick meeting, um, but it's, we're still catching up on cases going back, um, to March. So we'll have that meeting and then we'll have our regular June meeting and then maybe after that, we will see each other in person, maybe, hopefully.
I look forward to that. Okay.
And thank you, everyone, for doing the digital meeting. It went very well.
Um, Melissa?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, um, also say this to the the other board members. Um, my term expires in July and, um, I I doubt that I will, will sign up for another five years because I'm going to be traveling so much in the future. So if everyone can just keep in mind, um, names that we can, uh, present to city staff um, for another great competent ZBA board member.
There you go. Replace yourself. Recommend somebody.
I will give it some serious thought.
Yeah, okay. That's too bad, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah, well, I will miss you guys, too.
Yeah, you could always tune in by Zoom. I think this is gonna be a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Any seconds?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can that be the loudest vote? Aye. Anybody opposed to that? Doubt it. Okay, June second, everybody, it went well.
Yeah.